And this is our joint school board assembly meeting. So we'd like to welcome everyone. Before we do the roll call, I think we have a tech update.
I just want to give everybody a quick overview of what on the handheld mic today. If you guys need to pop, you can pop right off and then hop back on and move around. There's a button like on the touch, where you just tap.
That when it's green, the mic is live. Tap it.
I will jump into my real place because we are all that I'm asking.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so let's start with our roll call. Amanda?
Member Lessons? Here. Member Wilson?
She should be online. I'll check in a minute.
Okay. Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
He's here, but he's not in the room.
Okay. Member Donley?
Here.
Member Jacobs?
Present.
President Bellamy?
Here.
Thank you. Now for the Assembly.
Chair LaFrance?
Here.
I understand Vice Chair Constant is excused this morning and that Ms. Allard is also excused. Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar is also excused. Mr. Perez Verdia? Mr. Peterson? Ms. Quinn Davidson? I understand I might be running just a little late. Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Salt?
Here.
Mr. Voland?
Here.
And Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
All right, thank you. So please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. And Member Lessons, would you do the land acknowledgement, please?
Gladly. On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denine people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. To none.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item B on our agenda. Approval of the minutes from September 23rd. What is the pleasure of the group?
Madam President, I'll move to approve the minutes as presented, second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes as presented for September 23rd. Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Seeing, hearing none. September, the minutes for September 23rd, 2022 are approved. Now we're moving to the agenda. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions? Modifications? To the agenda, any changes to the agenda? Seeing or hearing no changes, we'll then accept a motion to approve?
Madam President, moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there, are there any oppositions? Is there any opposition to the motion to approve? Seeing and hearing none? The agenda is approved. And I'd like to note for the record that Pete Peterson has just joined us. And I'm not sure I'm missing, I can't see who's online because I don't have my computer today, so.
Member Wilson has joined us as well.
All right, thank you. So that brings us to item D on the agenda. Oh, and yes, and Assembly Member Quinn Davidson has joined us as well. Thank you. And yes, please enjoy coffee and holiday treats. Dr. Bryant, we're on item D.
All right, happy Friday, School Board and Assembly members. Last month, we had the opportunity to brief you on a comprehensive overview of the options the district is considering to address our $60-plus million structural deficit. As we've shared, while the community is understandably tuned into the school closure conversation, I want to reiterate that since late July, the School Board has been briefed on numerous other options, including specialized programs, one-time funds, pupil-to-teacher ratio, administrative reductions, and others. Myself, our CFO Jim and the team are here to answer questions you may have, so I'll go ahead and open the floor.
If I could give a quick update, Andy and I have been working for expectation management for the Assembly and Board members. We've been briefing in a significant number of vacancies since September. And, and so you will see the results of some cost savings from vacancies there. A lot of individuals, about 200 declined healthcare benefits, which increases costs that we otherwise would have had, or 200 more than we projected. And, and I do want to thank the Assembly. You all gave us $2.3 million because we did not have to spend the $2.3 million on SROs that we had budgeted, so that helps. And some attrition, we had some additional revenue from more intensive needs students, some ESSR savings. A lot of these savings we talk about sound like good things because we had savings, but those savings came at a cost of not being able to hire people to do the missions that we needed. So from Andy and I's perspective, when we're thinking this is good, that we had savings, we do recognize that, that it came at a cost of not having substitutes in schools and teachers in classrooms and tutors available and hot meals for students and all those other things. But you will see that Monday night when we briefed the Board for a revised projected deficit, along with the fund balance that we expect to have at the end of the year. So I don't know if there's any questions from the last brief. We thought this would be a Q and A type thing.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. So yes, so we did meet with, have a special session with the Assembly, and we thank you for that, making time for that. But we wanted to give you another opportunity to ask questions. Member Lessons?
Thank you. I don't know if we have this information available or if we will receive it next week with the pro forma. Do we have a, so last February, when we approved the FY23 budget, we approved PTR levels as presented. With the vacancies that we have, do we have a sense of what our PTR levels actually are this year? I know that I've asked about class sizes, which is a separate thing, and we got data about that early on, but I'm just wondering kind of where we're at with PTR with our vacancies.
It didn't, doesn't change PTR. PTR is a staffing metric that you use for budgeting purposes and is not necessarily directly related to class size, though it's very, very close at elementary. A lot of our vacancies, when, when we brief, one thing Andy will brief is $6 million more than projected in substitutes. A lot of those are long-term substitutes to fill vacancies, probably still cheaper, though not necessarily better than the originally intended position you were hoping to fill. I would love to say that it's, it's simple to understand all of the possible impacts, but we have a two-hour meeting on Monday, and we will walk you through in, in potentially painful detail of all the different things that have changed over the last six months.
Okay, thank you. Member LaFrance?
Thank you, President Bellamy, and thank you all for the information you provided at the work session and also for the opportunity to ask more questions. I have a question about the public process. I think the last town hall regarding school closures may have been this week, and so I'm curious what lies ahead for that part? If there'll be more opportunities for the public to provide feedback or how they should get updates? And also what you have gleaned from the public sessions you've held in the town halls as far as how that feedback might inform steps forward?
But the, the public process, just like with the Assembly, never stops, right? I mean, we have every single board meeting. Email is, is, is used prolifically and phone calls in public meetings and town hall meetings, so the public process never stops. But after nine town halls, I think we're, we're probably not going to schedule any more of those in the next several weeks, barring, barring the Board's direction. What I will tell you, we learned is that we'll close the second survey tonight. And just like the first survey, the number one most supported, most favored option of everything on the survey is school closure and consolidation. But when we go to school closure town halls, the number one thing you walk away from is not that school.
I, I would just echo what Mr. Anderson said. People love their schools, they love their programs. We're really internalizing the feedback that we've heard, but we're approaching a decision point. Going into December 10th, the School Board and administration will be convening to really look at all the options from a 30,000-foot view and to understand what's the best path to zero. And there are very few painless paths to zero.
Thank you for that information. And I guess just to follow on, I would ask if you have any further suggestions for how the Assembly might help? And maybe it's too soon in the process. I know some of us feel very strongly that we want to continue to support the SRO funding, for example. But if you have other ideas, some of us would like to hear about them. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you for that. For the record, I'm Andy Rowland, I'm the Director of the Office of Management and Budget here. The one thing that we are going to be looking at this year is an increase in the required local contribution from, that the state imposes on municipalities, which is based on the, like, 2.65 mils of the local property to values. So as you recall, from 2021 calendar year to 22 calendar year, they went up by about, like, you know, eight or 10%, six, somewhere around that, that range. So our true value went up, and that directly impacts the amount that the city is required to contribute. So as that may approach the city's tax cap, that's where I think we'd be looking for some flexibility to be able to, I mean, we calculate the district's cap, tax cap in the same way, but just for the district. And we can either go over or under that, and it's up to the city to collect up to the full tax cap government-wide. So we may be asking for us to exceed what our normal calculated just-for ASD portion would be. But that's really the only thing I can really think of that would really help shore us, shore up this issue. But just to know, just to know that, that's going to be, that request may be coming.
Thank you. Member Zalatell is in the queue.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I'm just going to reiterate my request from the work session to get an outline of, and a timeline perhaps in writing of what's happened, what's going to happen. I understand the district or the administration appears to be maybe almost done with its process, and it's going to shift over into the board process. Because my emails are still, you know, I think a lot of members are probably still getting emails, and what I would like to be able to do is direct people back to engage in the process. But I think that's hard to do without some easy way to know what that is and be able to say, hey, I hear this is important to you. This is where you can engage on that, or that it happened, but maybe there's a recording and they can tune in that way. So if that can be produced, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Zalatell. Any other questions, comments? I can't, any, any hands online? Amanda? Nope. Okay. Well, thank you guys very much. All right, let's move on. We do not have any items for E or F. So that brings us to G. Dr. Bryant, there are a number of items under G, so we will just take them one at a time in, in order. Transportation update.
All right, absolutely. So at a high level, we recently announced that we will be ending the cohorts starting on Monday. That's very exciting. We've been working on a number of short-term solutions, which we're excited about, but I'm also very excited about the long-term outlook in terms of route efficiencies and other things we can do to ensure that we never fall into the situation again. So I'll go ahead and let Acting COO provide additional details.
Hi, thank you, Rob Holland, Acting COO. So, get my glasses on here. Just to kind of give you a summary, so we are fully staffed now. How did we get there? So we've hired 69 drivers since, since August, when, when the situation really kind of bottomed out for us. But more importantly, as Dr. Bryant alluded to, we've been working on a long-term fix for this for many reasons, for efficiency, but also to, to prevent this from ever happening again. So much more than just a stopgap measure has, has ensued. So we met with our consultant from TransFinder. TransFinder is the software we're moving to that we have procured at this point, and TransFinder will be live on our system in February. So to get a jumpstart on that, the consultants from that company came out between, and spent between October 30th and November 5th with us. The initial result of that visit enabled us to reduce 25 routes. So we have reduced the need for 25 drivers. So where we had 228 routes, we now operate 204, and we're currently in that condition. And we've been there for about a week. We are hiring additional full-time substitute drivers, and those drivers give us a pad that we need. We're looking for about a 10% pad between us and the contractor. And so that's why we have the Monday go-live date, this coming Monday, where we have full service restored. So that work will continue. We just received the initial 55-page report from TransFinder that's going to allow the continued overhaul of this, this department, this transportation effort. We do look in the coming months to a further reduction of routes. ASD still uses a model where we operate 75 routes in-house, and the remainder are operated by the contractor. So within those terms, we're making the contractor whole on the reduction of routes. And in addition to that, the new wage, which we've had in place for several weeks now, as a result of negotiations where we settled the contract, and we now pay starting wages about $25 an hour. So we feel like we can retain drivers now. We will also have a plan this summer to have a retention piece in place where we're looking for opportunities. Some of those opportunities will be to partner with various nonprofits and departments of the MOA to keep many of the drivers on staff during the summer. Whereas in the past, they've always been only nine-month employees. If there's any questions, I could take those.
Thank you, Chief Holland. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. So one of the challenges we faced was the, our drivers were being paid significantly less than the municipal drivers. Are we on a par with them now?
We're much closer. We're not exactly the same, and, and these things are always moving targets. The greater moving target would seem to be the demand-driven tourism industry. But it was a significant increase, the largest increase that's ever been offered by far. And so we, we really do feel like we have bridged the gap. There were some additional gains in, in pension and healthcare as well. So it, it's, it's a big step up for this group. The bigger piece, not bigger, the additional large lift will be for us to figure out this summer piece. I don't have all the options on that yet, but there will be, there will be a change in how we retain or possibly pay a retention bonus for drivers to stay on over the summer and, and come back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Member Lessons?
Thank you. This is perhaps jumping the gun to January-ish. It's my understanding that we will, that we're expecting to hear some sort of an update on school start times, and there's an intersection between busing and start times and budget solutions. And I wonder if you can offer any preview or insights? I mean, how, how would routes intersect with start, how would more efficient routes intersect with potential start time adjustments? And if you can't speak to that yet, I understand.
I can speak to that, but let's agree that this would be suppositional at this point, in theory. And as a result, I have been able to read that, that document yesterday. It's very interesting from TransFinder. Woven into that are various scenarios that include, but are not limited to, to school start changes. I can tell you that a combination of further analysis of our bus routes, separate from start time changes, further analysis to include identifying actual ridership, something we haven't done. I won't get into the details on that, but we haven't done that in the past in a way many other major school, major urban school districts have done. So we're moving toward that, so we know actual ridership coming into the year, which is lower than we've been tracking, by the way. And then school start times, I can tell you that we have an opportunity to consolidate up to another 50 routes. And if we could someday get to that, that now we have the ability to truly talk about an inclusion piece with, with optional programs and charter schools, et cetera.
Thank you. Member Cross?
Thank you. Has any pursuit or, you know, investigation been done as far as looking at our arsenal of vehicles that we have to attack this problem and maybe going to smaller vehicles that are, don't have the license or have the CDL requirements? And just looking at how we, how much of our transportation issue is locked into the kind of vehicles and things we use? Have we looked outside what we traditionally associate with school buses and school transportation, look at alternative forms?
Yeah, great, great comment there. So the way the buses are configured, the signaling, the colors, et cetera, is, is kind of set by the Department of Transportation, but the size of the buses. Now, the CDL piece has been brought up in the past. We think that the competitiveness piece isn't truly related as much as people think it may be to the CDL piece. And that's because the ASD provides a free training program to, to the CDL status. Not only is it free, but, but drivers are paid the full wage while they're in that training program, okay? So we don't feel like, we, we feel like we've removed any barriers to the CDL piece by itself. To your point, and also in the TransFinder report, is a piece about our aging bus fleet, however, and that we do have a number of buses that are aged past what's considered usable life. So depending on how far we go with consolidations, we may be able to weave into that a piece where we, we get a more modern fleet and in some cases, smaller buses. Now that would really go to efficiency, though, cost of operation per route.
Well, if I may follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
It would also go into, you know, also accessibility. I mean, you know, obviously, our, our current fleet that have the chains that drop down and just ice issues. I mean, I, I would assume that if you had a more reliable, maybe all-wheel-drive fleet, depending on what the smaller vehicles look like, you know, there may or may not be as many school closures on snow days and stuff, just because you're able to provide more adequate and consistent transportation. It's a hypothesis.
Certainly something to be considered, with, with some caution or some clarification that the school closures have a lot to do with walkability for sidewalks that wouldn't be plowed in, in time, for instance, and also parents driving from small feeder roads, getting their cars out. So that it's, it's a complex issue on, on the school closures. But yes, there are more modern, there's more modern technology available that we could look at as we replace the buses, that, that's a fact.
Any other questions for Chief Holland? Member Donley?
Thank you. As we've been going through the, the town halls and the meetings at the various schools that are proposed to be closed, there's been questions from the public about how, because some of the plans require new busing for students. How are we going to fulfill our promise to those folks if those schools are actually closed, that they have bus service to the new school locations?
So the easiest way to that answer is the fact that we already have our first chunk of slack built into our system, and we're continuing to go from there. We're not going to stop hiring at this point. Just for clarification, when I mentioned we, we are fully staffed now, we're still building out a more robust bench of substitute drivers than we've had in the past. As part of our contingency plan, moving forward to keep this from happening again, because of the essential service this is for the community. So as we go forward, and I alluded to a moment ago, we're, we're going to find more efficiencies working through the TransFinder report, and once we have the software installed in February. So we do plan on, if one or more schools is closed, to immediately building out the routes. We'll show that to the School Board, and we can make that information public, but we will have the capacity to do that.
Thank you, Chief Holland. Okay, seeing no other questions, let's move on to our mental health services update. Dr. Bryant?
All right, thank you. Earlier this year, the district established a new office of mental health and student supports to really underscore the fact that mental health and student support plays an important role in students' educational experience. So our senior director of that department will be here to provide the Assembly with a brief overview of the services that her department provides. So Dr. Knutson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Okay, we have a slideshow up there for you. So I want to thank you for having me today. My partner in crime, Kate McClellan, isn't here today. She's our Director of Student Support, so I'm going to be talking a little bit about the work that she's in charge of as well. And we're excited to be able to talk about this work because it is so needed within our community and our schools. So, um, next slide. Just want to start out with the context for you. According to the U.S. Surgeon General in 2007, and this really hasn't changed since then, 20% of children and youth are in need of mental health interventions. But only a third of those in need actually receive support. Of those that receive support, 70% of that support is in a school setting. So schools really are a point of access for our kids for mental health services. So when students are healthy and they feel safe, they learn, and that's a critical part to the work that we're doing. This is really our why of what we're doing in the Anchorage School District right now of addressing mental health. Board Guard Rail 4.0, which you'll see up there, is really our foundation for building out this comprehensive model. This guard rail is really exciting because it addresses not only the internal mental health services that we have in schools through our school psychologists or school counselors, but it expands out to community clinicians coming into schools, which we have dabbled in in the past, but we haven't systematically put in place. So that's what's really exciting about this. And really, the work is to establish a comprehensive mental health model. This is the what of what we're doing in the Anchorage School District. And this year, we're really trying to focus on the how. So how do we pull all these systems together, and how do we do this in a systematic way so that we can best serve our students and our families and our staff? Because after pandemic, we have a lot of stress on our staff as well. So this year, what we're using and what we're referring to is what's called the Interconnected Systems Framework, or ISF, that you see up there. And this is really an evidence-based approach. It's out of the National Center on School Mental Health from the University of Maryland, and it really helps school districts and community partners merge into a single system so that we can better serve kids. And, and really, this is the, the how of what we're going to be doing. We're going to be bringing in these tools to help us navigate the system. And what's really exciting is there's districts all over the nation that have started this work, so we don't have to start from scratch. So our community partners are coming in with learning and knowledge from what other districts are doing, and we're referring and working with other districts to figure out how we can do this well. Next slide. Really want to start off with common language, and this is what we're trying to build in the Anchorage School District as well, because sometimes we mix things up when we talk about mental health. Some people are thinking about mental illness. So we're really building that common language. So when we talk about mental health, how we're defining it is really the social, emotional, and behavioral well-being of students. And this is a definition we're using out of the University of Maryland School of Health, School of Medicine. And that really is different from mental illness, where you're looking at a condition that impacts a young person's thinking, emotions, mood, and it really interferes with your daily functioning, both at home and at school. And then finally, what we're working on here with this work is our mental health services, and we're defining that as any activities, services, and. And we're defining that as any activities, services, and supports that address social, emotional, behavioral well-being of students. And this includes substance use. So that is what we're focusing on. It may include kids that have mental illness, but really, we're really focusing on that whole mental health, the whole well-being of a child. Next slide. So I'm going to go into our Board Guard Rail 4.1 and talk a little bit about what we've been doing to address this. And then we'll go into Board Guard Rail 4.2 for you. So our Guard Rail 4.1 really addresses our internal mental health and behavioral health resources in the ASD. So this goal is to have at least a .5 FTE equivalent at each elementary school. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam President, but we focused on elementary because we do not have halftime or even full-time at every elementary school right now. So while we're looking at pre-K through 12 with our mental health supports, there is a focus on elementary to build those supports out so that we have equitable resources across our whole division for our kids. So with that, one of the things that we're doing, and when we define this, I just want to clarify, we're talking about school psychologists, school counselors at this point, okay? And having that .5 mental health support. We have other resources in schools as well. We have behavior analysts and strategists who we call in, but they're more itinerant, that can be called into schools if a child is having some challenging behaviors that we need to work with to help with their learning and help them be successful in school. So they'll come in and they'll work with teams to develop behavior support plans. We also have behavior specialists that do more coaching with teachers around, you know, just strategies that they can use in classrooms and classroom management. But when we're talking about the mental health supports, we're really focusing on those school counselors and school psychologists. And one of our actions is we will be adding our posting for three more elementary school counselor positions in January, based on some grant funding that we got from the board. So as Dr. Brian said, to coordinate all these services for kids, one of our actions this year was to form the Mental Health and Student Support Department. And so basically, that was before we had fragmented services. We had the services, but they were in different departments, had different missions. And so our goal was to bring those under one department so we can have coordinated care. So this includes our healthcare services and nurses, our school psychologists, our elementary counselors, our behavior analysts and strategists. And then the work we're doing around social, emotional learning, positive behavior interventions and supports, and then our crisis response. And right now, that's a lot of the work we've been doing this year is learning what's been in place, what we've kind of slipped away from over the pandemic years that we need to retrain people up on, and really coordinating those services. Crisis response, I mean, you're probably hearing that, is a big one in our schools right now. And that is something that we're looking at and refining so that we can support our staff and our students. So that's what the department is. And our mission in the department is really to work collaboratively with students, educators, administrators, families, and community partners to support the physical, social, emotional well-being for every student so that they can be successful academically. And we do this by providing interventions and supports, crisis response, professional development, resources, and technical assistance to schools. Last June was really exciting because we brought all of our practitioners into a work session in the summer. And they came through and they really looked at what their roles and responsibilities were, overlaps between their different roles, where they're separate, so that we could better coordinate those services in schools. So they laid that out and they did it within a positive behavior interventions and support model. So I want to talk about what that is because this is critical to school-based mental health. Across the country, if you don't have this tiered system of support in place, it is very fragmented in schools, what services you get. So you might have a clinician coming into your building, but they're almost acting as private practice in the school. They're kind of separate. And what we found and what researchers found is that integrating them into the school system is a much better, more effective way of having clinicians come in. So I just wanted to brief you a little bit, next slide, on positive behavior and intervention supports. So PBIS is really an evidence-based framework for supporting students' academic and behavior in social, emotional health. It's not a curriculum that we're adopting. It's not just a PD that we're putting in place. It's really a framework and system of how we provide increasingly more intensive services for kids. So if you work in the health field, what we've learned from our community providers, they use a tiered system of support as well. We borrowed this from the medical field in looking at prevention, intervention, and how we tier that out. So let's start with Tier One real quick. And this is school-wide systems of support for all kids. These are things we put in place in our schools so that we can prevent behavioral mental health issues in kids and help them be successful in their learning as best as possible. And Tier One supports typically meet the needs of about 80% of the kids in the school alone. So you don't really need additional supports for kids. This will meet about the needs of 80%. So this includes things like school leadership teams where we really, the principal and teachers in the school, think through, what are those school-wide expectations we have for kids? How are we going to reinforce that? To really create a safe learning environment for kids. This also includes classroom management strategies that teachers put in place to make that safe learning environment within those individual classrooms, as well as social skills lessons that might happen and database decision-making. So how are we looking at data and progress of kids? So looking at those office referrals of behavior incidents, as well as suspensions, in-school and out-of-school suspensions, those types of things. And that really informs how intense those school-wide supports need to be. If a school needs more structures in place, that data should show you and you should put more instruction in place. If they don't, you kind of loosen it and you kind of go based on what the needs are of the students and staff. So Tier Two is more targeted intervention support. And this is for some kids. So Tier One alone isn't going to meet the needs of all kids. So some kids are going to need a little extra help. Maybe there's some anger management issues that we want to work on to help them cope better in the classroom when they're getting frustrated with that math problem. And instead of blowing up, they use their coping strategies. So tiered interventions of support meet the needs of about an additional 10 to 15% of kids. So this is targeted social, excuse me, emotional and behavioral groups. So we might pull kids in small groups and do some social skills lessons. It could also be something like a check-in, check-out. So a lot of our counselors, nurses, psychologists, even people like BPOs and other folks in the building that kids feel trusted with, they might check in with the trusted adult at the beginning of the day, monitor some goals they have for themselves to be successful in school, and then they'll check out at the end of the day. So that's an example of a Tier Two intervention that we might do with students. And then we progress monitor more often. So instead of just looking at office discipline referrals, we might monitor their goals that they have and see how are they responding to that intervention. And then finally, it's our Tier Three, and this is the most intensive level of support. This is for a few amount of kids. It's about 5 to 10% of students. And this is really more individualized for kids. And this is where our community clinicians really enter into the picture. But I want to say, in an integrated model, they also help us with Tier Two as well and Tier One. I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a bit. But at Tier Three, this is where we're doing more functional behavioral assessments. So where our psychologists might come in and they might look at what's triggering behaviors for kids. Because then we can match that to potential interventions that we would do with them in an individualized intervention plan. This also involves more individual counseling and/or therapy. Wraparound supports with our community. This is where we're really going to be wanting to work with families and seeing what supports they might not need help accessing. Crisis intervention, our safety risk assessments, which are suicide risk assessments and self-harm assessments. And we do more frequent data collection here. Because if kids are really struggling, it's kind of like being in the ICU at a hospital. They come in and take your vitals very often. And that's what our Tier Three is like. It's like our ICU, is how we're checking in with kids more frequently to make sure that we're meeting their needs. This system is critical to have something like this in place to be able to do the mental health work. Because then what we're doing with the Interconnected Systems Framework, or ISF, is now we're blending into this our mental health supports. We're blending in our clinician to help provide that therapy. And it's not two separate systems. So what we found even in our schools now is when we have not had a strong PBIS model in place, integrating a clinician into a school has been a little tricky because they become kind of a separate entity as opposed to working with the school teams. So this is something we've learned and we've started working on with our community partners. Next slide. Oh, yeah. Remember, Donley, I'm collecting people in the queue. Can I put you in the queue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to keep going? Okay. All right. So I want to focus a little bit as part of 4.1, our Guard Rail, on our internal providers and who those are. I mentioned school counselors, school psychologists, and then we also have our school nurses. As I stated earlier, we're going to be adding three more elementary counselors in January. But this chart really outlines the work that these providers do across those tiers of support that I just talked about. I'm not going to read all of it for you, but I just want to highlight a few things for you. I want to start with elementary counselors. So we do not have full-time or even half-time elementary counselors at every school, as I stated earlier. We have 59 elementary schools. 11 schools have full-time counselors, that's 18% of our elementary schools. 27 have halftime, that's 46%. And 21 schools have no counselor, that's 35% of our schools. Now, they do have some school psychology support services, but we have very limited behavioral and mental health support at some of those schools. Counselors spend most of their time working at that Tier One and Tier Two levels of support. They're providing a lot of classroom social skills lessons, small group counseling and interventions for students. They provide professional development for teachers and helping support kids. But then they also provide some of those Tier Three services. So they are on our crisis response teams. When there is a crisis that we pull people together, our psychologists and our school counselors, and we'll deploy them to schools to help support students and staff. They also help support our risk assessments. So they are helping do the suicide risk assessments and the self-harm assessments when there is a need that's brought up from a student. Oops, I was marrying. So that's our school counselors. We have, I'm going to move to school psychologists next. We have 47 school psychologists and six interns. And the intern piece is really important. I'll talk about that at the end because we have a real robust internship program that has attracted people to Alaska. Our school psychs serve all of our schools. So every school has school psych services. The problem is, is we don't have enough to have one per school. We don't have the funding to have one per school. So they're spread out. So some schools, a large high school might have one, a full-time school psychologist. But when you have that many students, you know, they can only do so much. We also have some schools that may have a school psych one day a week and don't even have a counselor. Okay? So maybe one day a week, they have those services and everything else is emergency-based. So, but we do have school psych support across all our schools. School psychologists primarily serve at Tier Two and Tier Three level. They do provide some Tier One support. I was a school psychologist for a long time, doing professional development. They sit on the leadership teams, that type of thing. But where they're really focusing on is Tier Two and Tier Three. The primary focus is special education. So there's a lot of assessments for special education, especially behavior disorders, learning disabilities, things of that nature, autism. But they also provide counseling services for kids who have that on their IEPs as well. School sites also provide small group interventions, too. If they get parent permission, they can do Tier Two levels of support in group, depending on how much they're there. So if you're a school psych and you're in a building one day a week, chances are, you're going to be doing most of your services through the IEP work. If you're there more days, you might have more opportunity to provide other supplemental services to other kids who aren't on an IEP. School psychs lead, they are, school psych lead psychologist Linda Self leads our crisis response team. So they deploy, she deploys people as well as the risk assessment. So we partner with counselors to do that work. And then finally, we have nurses as well. And we have 90 nurses and 12.75 health treatment nurses. And they really provide subsupport and other supports for health records and screenings and that for nurses. And nurses are in all of our schools. So their primary responsibility is physical health. But because they're in the buildings and by nature of their training, they're also providing mental health support and emotional support to our students and teachers and staff. And then they also help with the risk assessments. We always try and have two people on the risk assessments. So they're one of the people that are trained, the principal, then school nurse, the school psychologist, and the school counselor are all trained very heavily on risk assessments. So those are our internal providers. And we have quite a bit in the schools, but it's not enough. All those positions, we have open positions across the district. And really finding the provider pool across whether you're talking internal resources or our community partners is not enough to meet the demand in our community. And there is a growing need. So this is a problem we're problem-solving really across our community as well as in the Anchorage School District. And so that's where you'll see some schools might have multiple resources. They'll have a community clinician, a psychologist there three times a week, a full-time counselor, and they have a lot of resources. And I will tell you, in some of them are more high-need schools, they're still struggling to meet the mental health needs of kids. And you'll go from that to a school that might have no counselor, a psychologist one day a week, and a nurse. So it is, that's part of the work we're trying to do is to grow that and so that every elementary school has at least a .5. Next slide. So when you're thinking about community partners and our internal partners, this slide really kind of gives you a visual of how we provide services. And the first triangle that's pointing down, that really represents our community partners. You'll see the bulk, that Tier Three level, that's where most of their services are. They are trained in providing therapy and then they do family counseling and stuff and they can refer out. So they're going to be doing a lot of the more intensive support with kids through referrals. You have to get consent. It's just not like they're seeing kids, you know, whoever refers them. We have to get consent from families and stuff. But they're providing the bulk of their work. They also provide Tier Two, and that's some of the work we've done in agreement to remove some barriers so they can help with some of those Tier Two social skills groups. Or, you know, there might be a lot of loss in a family, so they might do a grief group. Again, that's through parent consent. We just don't pull kids and do that. But this allows them to do more than just individual therapy with kids. And then at Tier One, they may help with some professional development, trauma-informed practices. I know some of our clinicians have done that on our in-service days at their schools. And that's a great way that they can help support those services for all kids. Now, on the school district side, you'll see it flipped. And this is why these things complement each other so well. The bulk of our providers in our schools are providing that Tier One. They're establishing those school-wide expectations to build a safe learning environment, classroom management, working with teachers on how you build a strong classroom management plan, doing, just really providing those systems and supports. And then at Tier Two, again, our counselors are primarily providing those groups of instruction. But if you don't have that, having that backup community provider is also nice to do. In schools where we have both, they collaborate together to figure out what is the best way to serve our kids so that we can, you know, maybe the community clinician takes a group and the counselor takes a group. They figure out based on where their strengths are, who's going to do which group and stuff. And then again, Tier Three, we have limited resources. Our school psychologists provide the bulk of it, but a lot of that is to kids that are eligible for special education. This is where our community partners and clinicians in schools really provide that additional therapy. And sometimes families don't access it because they're working all day and, you know, the kids are in school. So this also provides an opportunity for kids who may not have gotten that therapy to get it at a school site. So that really just shows you how these things complement each other and how we work together, not separately. As a private practice, we don't want clinicians to be having a private practice model in our school. We want to work with them together. So next slide, I want to get into the community partnerships. And this is really Guard Rail 4.2 for our district. And this is to increase the number of students with school partnership access for mental and behavioral health services. So last spring, we did a request for information. We put that out to see which organizations would be really interested in providing, you know, putting clinicians into buildings to do this model. We got a response from four entities, which you'll see up there. And we have active partnerships with Alaska Behavioral Health, Volunteers of America, Alaska, and Providence Behavioral Health. Alaska Child and Family has a different model. They're in our schools, but they oftentimes are working with individual kids, usually through IEPs and other services that they're working with an individual kid. But there is an interest with them and other... But there is an interest with them and may and others to to do this work. Not everyone is quite there yet to be able to do it. So we're going to continue to engage and hopefully expand to other community partners as they have the capacity. We have engaged community partners. And before I go on, I want to just say Kate McClellan, who is the director of student supports. She really is leading this work around guard rail four point two. And she is a licensed social worker. She's worked with Volunteers of America Alaska, other entities. So she has that community clinician perspective that has been just incredibly valuable to our district in understanding that. So she engaged principals who have community partners in her their schools. And we really had honest conversations about what is working and what isn't working. Because you know, a clinic is a very different environment than a school setting. And so how do we merge these two in a way that's going to best benefit our kids and our staff? So through that engagement, we got a lot of information from principals about, for example, training. That our clinicians need before coming into the buildings, just understanding what is an IEP? How do we go through a special ed process? What is the crisis response process that we have in the schools? Just even things about how a school functions, you know, with radio calls and things like that. Things that we didn't think of when we first started having clinicians in buildings. And then we did the same thing with our community partners and found out what are the areas that they felt frustrated with coming into a school setting. So that's some of the work that's happened this year to to build this model. We've also really engaged state entities to start building up relationships about how we can do this in a more efficient way. Many of the school districts we've talked to over the last year, they work very closely with state entities on how to do this work. And their state departments really help fund some of the work in schools. So we've been reaching out and having conversations with DEED and the Division of Behavioral Health, several different people to start. Seeing how do we work together on this instead of us doing this and they're doing their own thing? How can, how can we really get their support? So we've started those conversations as well. And then finally, engaging our community partners. What we learned is that we needed to have a regular venue where we could have conversations about what was working, what wasn't working and problem solve through that. So Kate and I meet with VOA Providence and Alaska Behavioral Health every month. And our main work recently has been around our memorandums of agreement. So it can really help best support our clinicians in schools at that point. But that's the time when we work together. So really, there's been a lot of work and learning happening around our community partnerships. That I think is just strengthening and making this process better. And we're going to keep iterating this and I think keep getting better. So you might be wondering where all these people. So if we go to the next slide, we can show you where our community partners are. Right now, we have nineteen partnerships across fifteen schools. Four schools have two partnerships. And this is because we have our school based health centers in those schools and they they also provide the behavioral health services. So as you're looking here for elementary Chester Valley, and I have the school listed and underneath it's which provider has is providing the clinician. But we have Chester Valley, Muldoon, Lake Otis and Heisen have had community partners in there. And new this year that we're working on right now is getting one in Russian Jack, Tudor and Northwood. And then we're, VOA is also going to be adding in a fourth one. So we're going to be working on that next semester to add that. So this is really helping us at the elementary level start building out the capacity. But we're, as you can see, we're not just focusing on elementary, even though that's a big, we have to grow that to support our kids. We also know that there are tremendous needs at middle, high and alternative schools. So right now, our middle schools are Baggage, Romig, Wendler and new this year is Clark. And then high schools Bartlett, Betty Davis, East Anchorage and West Anchorage High School has has clinicians. And then Benny Benson also has a clinician. So this is a good starting point, isn't anywhere near where we needed to be. But there are some reasons too. And the pacing of this, I'm just going to tell you, is going to be based on availability of clinicians. There is not enough people for us to have a clinician in every building across the district, which is our goal. It's our goal to have that. So we're, we're really trying to problem solve together on what can we do to help grow this? So next slide, I just want to talk about a little bit of the constraints we've come across and we've learned. And some of our solutions that we're working on. So like I said, our biggest constraint right now is limited pool of mental health providers. We don't have all our school counselor positions filled in the Anchorage School District. We don't have all of our school psych positions filled. And our community partners, when we're adding on a clinician in a school, we're having a hard time finding people to to fill those positions. So we have the majority filled, but there's still a gap in being able to do that. So some of the things we're working on is university partnerships. So one of the things we've done is reached out to UAA. They have a school, they have a social work program and they do a school social work certification. So we really can work with them on figuring out if we don't have a counselor, could we put a social worker in there? And so really thinking about how can we maximize the resources that we have? So that's one area we're looking at. I know some of our community providers are working with other universities to try and get people up here to do their internships and keep them here. We have done the same thing. Our school psychology program has probably one of the most robust internship programs of districts across the country. We do six school psych interns a year, they do a full year internship. And they work under the supervision of another school psychologist. They come in doctoral level or master's level students with a wealth of experience because they've done extensive practicum in their universities. And we've built some partnerships with some universities. And we're getting some amazing school psych interns. And half of our school sites that we have now were interns with us. So it's a very successful program that we're figuring out. How do we grow that with counselors and other things so that we can have that pool of people coming in as well as our community clinicians? How do they build that so they they can have social workers pipeline and those type of things as well? The other thing that's exciting is the work that is being done around college career and life ready. This is an opportunity as we start exploring pathways in our community, there's a huge need for behavioral health providers. This could potentially be a pathway of growing our students, you know, and going into this field. So that's an exciting solution that we can look at as that work continues to grow. Another constraint is integration of mental health into our PBIS at every school. So every school has components of PBIS and mental health in place. But putting it in place in a systematic way, so we have the seamless tiered levels of support for kids is what we need to support our schools on. So right now, we've reached out and we're getting technical assistance from Northwest PBIS, which is a technical assistance center for our area. So they're starting to work with us. And as a veto consulting, they worked with the state of Idaho to integrate community clinicians into their schools. And also worked with the state on how to integrate Medicaid funding in order to fund some of this stuff. So that's one of our things that I'll get to in a minute that we're really looking at. So they, we can benefit from some knowledge that they've done in starting to build and grow this in the Anchorage School District. The other constraint we've run across is differences between school and clinical settings. And I talked about that a little bit earlier. Both our clinicians have expressed it, our principals have expressed it, but but it's good learning. It wasn't insurmountable, we learned through doing. And so now we're adjusting our system. So we were revising our memorandums of agreement to make it easier and to work together with each other and outlining that in our agreements. We're also creating a standardized integration process. So really kind of a handbook of how would you integrate a clinician into a school? And what are the steps it takes? And what do you need to have in place for this to be successful? So that a principal knows if they're getting a clinician, what does that mean for me on my end in a in a school? And then the clinic in the clinician knows what does that mean for me as I'm going to be working in a school instead of a clinical setting? And then we're really increasing the training and onboarding for our clinicians in the schools. One example of that is we do prepare training, which is crisis response training. Our school psychology lead does that with with staff. And we had probably about half of our community clinicians who we currently have in schools attend that in October it was. And really good response, really great partnership and learning how we how we can respond to critical incidents in our schools. And they were just a really great partner in that. And then finally, really ongoing sustainability is the biggest thing. So how do we continue this going with budget cuts and other things that are happening? So this is where we're really engaging our local and at the national level to really understand the best practices. How you build advocacy for school based mental health. And really getting to the point where how do we start working with our partners to advocate for sustainable behavioral health funding models? And this includes Medicaid, really. Current eCare expansion doesn't exist in the state of Alaska. And our school based Medicaid reimbursement environment really makes it challenging for districts to access that Medicaid. So this is the conversations we're starting to have is how do we make this a reality? We just sent Kate as well as our Medicaid specialist down to a national Medicaid conference. So that they can really learn about school based behavioral health and Medicaid and what are our options for that? So this is, we're just dabbling in this and trying to figure out how do we, how could that be an option for us to help support this? And then finally, next slide, and I promise I'm done, you can open up for questions, is what are our next steps? Our next steps are really starting to expand this work and and pulling people in and developing advisory and leadership teams. Our advisory teams really are national level and and state level. So pulling in national experts, our departments of behavioral health, indeed. People that are making decisions about how we can build systems and structures to support this are really advisory. And leadership teams, our principals, our teachers, our counselors on how we continue to improve this and expand across the district. And those teams will really develop a four year implementation plan for this integrated model. We have a great start, but how do we scale it up and how do we tweak it? And so we'll get technical assistance to really help us do that. And then the biggest thing is securing funding for implementation. So board allocated us our funds. We were able to use some of that over this year and next year to help support this work. Title four, which is in our Every Student Succeeds Act. It really focuses on safety and health of students so that they can learn in the schools. And they focus on mental health, PBIS, all of these things we're working on. We're able to use utilize those fundings to sources to help support it. We applied for Project Aware, which is advancing wellness and resiliency in education by SAMSA. We have letters of support from DEED and the Division of Behavioral Health for this. And hopefully we'll get it. And it's to work on this and expanding, provides funds that could help our community clinicians go into more schools. As well as build out our own practitioners and PBIS model. We'll find out hopefully by the end of December if they're on track. And then finally, we're going to be researching other grant opportunities and exploring Medicaid options to to continue this work. So we're at the beginning stages, but it is a promising practice that is based on evidence across other school districts and research. So we're just excited that we have this opportunity to do this work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Knutson. We have quite a few people in the queue. Let's start with member Zalatim.
Thank you for a very comprehensive presentation. So I had two questions. I don't see the municipal investment in your presentation anywhere. And we provided significant funds since 2020 to really catalyze mental health in schools. So it'd be really great to know where that braids into the process here and if, yeah, and and how that how that's working. The second question I have is maybe a bit more technical. I heard it a little bit that tier three students are often special ed students. But where is the intersection of the identification and referral process in the other tiers? I always get nervous when we do school based interventions or school wide interventions. And we wait to see if those work and they sometimes hamstring or deter parents from requesting the evaluations when those are necessary. And in fact, your example of the child in math really got me. Because a child who is acting out in math class may not just be acting out in math class and have, you know, an anger issue. That child may have a learning disability or something else. And so I really want to ensure that as you're looking to streamline and systematize this process. That there's seamless integration with special education referrals so that we don't deter parents from being able to take advantage of that evaluation process as necessary. Thank you.
No, I really appreciate that. Multi-tiered system of support should not be a wait to fail model. In fact, prior to putting in tiers of support, our system was a wait to fail model. We'd wait till kids failed so much, a teacher would refer them to a team. We didn't have schoolwide data, we didn't do screenings to try and identify kids. And so a lot of times we would wait for them to fail and then we would, it would be too, you know, it'd be later and we'd give those services. So if we're doing a multi-tiered system of support right, that is not happening. We are identifying kids when they when they need it. So if, when we do interventions, PBIS is not just looking at the behavior, but you're also looking at the academics. If a student is struggling and reacting like that to math. We have to determine whether it's a learning issue or is it just a behavior issue? So I totally agree with you and that's what our student support teams do. So we have student support teams at schools that are supposed to be problem solving these things and they do collaborative problem solving. Where we put interventions in place to see, to really parse out, is this something that we, if given a little bit extra intervention, the student does?